6.10, consideration of presentation and discussion of the draft Climate Adaptation Plan. And this is going to be presented by Michelle and Shannon from the Community Development Department.
Good afternoon, Board. We are here this afternoon to present an update on a part of the Lake County 2050 project, the Climate Adaptation Plan, which is a part of the project but moving along its own timeline due to funding that the county received in collaboration with the RRA and RCD, the APGP grant. So that has funded the work on this plan, and that work will be wrapping up with the grant deadline of January 30th. So this is going to be a short update and a brief discussion about the goals, actions, and strategies that we're planning to have included in the Climate Adaptation Plan and an opportunity for both the public and the Board to give some input before we have a public draft. So if we could make Jacqueline, hi Jacqueline. And she's going to do a short presentation. Thanks Jacqueline for being here.
Hey Shannon, I will go ahead and share my screen. And just want to confirm, is everyone able to see my screen?
We can.
Thank you for confirming. Good afternoon Supervisors. So let me just dance the next slide. So this is the agenda for this presentation. We'll start with introductions to the project team, provide an overview of the Climate Adaptation Plan, summarize the process and the results of the climate vulnerability analysis, go over the pillars of landscape resilience, provide an overview of what is going into the Climate Adaptation Plan document, and then go over next steps in the process. So this project is being led by county staff through the Community Development Department and the Office of Climate Resilience in partnership with the cities of Clear Lake and Lakeport and the Lake County Resource Conservation District. On this slide, we've also listed several of the county departments that have participated in reviewing and providing feedback on project materials throughout the process. My name is Jacqueline Protsman-Ror with Placeworks. I'm the Project Manager on the Consultant Team, and I'm joined today by Tammy Seal, Principal in Charge on the Consultant Team. So to start off with a bit of project background, this effort began with the establishment of the Community Risk Reduction Authority in 2018, and then the formation of the Lake County Office of Climate Resiliency in 2022. The Community Risk Reduction Authority, in coordination with the Office of Climate Resilience, adopted the pillars of landscape resilience in 2023. And then later that same year, the county, in partnership with the Resource Conservation District and the cities, were awarded the California Adaptation Planning Grant for the Equitable Climate Safe Project. In 2024, the project team began developing the climate vulnerability analysis, the countywide evacuation study, and the Climate Adaptation Plan concurrent with the Lake County 2050 General Plan Update. So I'll now provide an overview of the adaptation plan. The goal of the Climate Adaptation Plan is to develop a roadmap for building climate resilience across Lake County, including the cities of Lakeport and Clear Lake. In the context of this plan, adaptation means making changes in response to current or future conditions, usually to reduce harm and to take advantage of new opportunities. And resilience means the ability of communities to withstand, recover, and learn from past disasters to strengthen future response and recovery efforts. So this process identified the most vulnerable communities, natural systems, and built assets through the climate vulnerability analysis. And the strategies and actions in the adaptation plan itself will be integrated with the existing pillars of landscape resilience to create a cohesive approach to resilience across all sectors. The Climate Adaptation Plan will provide practical and feasible solutions to reduce climate risks, considering existing resources, gaps, and capacity constraints, with clear pathways for implementation. This plan is being developed based on the four-step process outlined in the California Adaptation Planning Guide. During the first phase of the project, the project team initiated the process by defining the scope of the climate vulnerability analysis. Phase two was focused on assessing vulnerability, or the degree to which populations and community assets will be affected by climate change hazards. And the development of the vulnerability analysis itself was the main product of this phase. And now we're currently in phase three of the process, which focuses on defining the adaptation framework, which in this case is the pillars of landscape resilience, and developing strategies and actions for each of those pillars. The next phase, phase four, will focus on implementation, where funding will be secured for programs and actions listed in the plan. Implementation will be monitored and evaluated, and the plan may be adjusted over time to account for capacity and needs of the Lake County community. So the Climate Adaptation Plan is intended to be a living document that supports other plans and programs throughout Lake County, and therefore integrates with several other plans to do so. The county and city general plans can use the climate vulnerability analysis to inform long-term climate resilience policies and programs. The Climate Adaptation Plan can use the Community Wildfire Protection Plan to coordinate wildfire fuel reduction projects and evacuation route protections. The multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan can act as a tool to implement the CAP with the CAP's long-term climate-focused strategies and the LHMP's near-term hazard reduction projects updated about every five years. The capital improvement plans of the county and the cities can also act as implementation tools with climate vulnerability analysis and strategies informing infrastructure planning projects for resilience. The drought resilience plan is a topic-focused plan supporting over 80 small water systems in the county, and the CAP can provide a broad framework for implementing drought preparedness strategies. And then finally, the Blue Ribbon Committee on the Rehabilitation of Clear Lake provides recommendations for rehabilitating Clear Lake, which can be incorporated into the CAP to support the economy, ecosystems, and heritage of the area. So now I'll briefly go over the climate vulnerability analysis. To start off with, what is a vulnerability analysis? According to the California Adaptation Planning Guide, the primary guidance document for these types of analyses across the state, a vulnerability analysis is an assessment of how a changing climate may harm a community, and which elements are most vulnerable to its effects. The project team used a four-step process for evaluating vulnerabilities, including identifying exposure to hazards, analyzing sensitivity of populations and community assets, and potential impacts of the hazards, evaluating adaptive capacity, which is the ability of populations or community assets to prepare for, respond to, and recover from hazards using existing resources, and then pulling all of those components together to then assess vulnerability. The vulnerability analysis evaluated how 91 different population groups and community assets across the unincorporated Lake County and the cities of Lakeport and Clear Lake were vulnerable to eight different climate change hazards. The hazards included agricultural forestry, agriculture and forestry pests and diseases, drought, extreme temperatures, flooding, human health hazards, landslide and debris flow, severe weather, and wildfire and smoke. Here are the key findings from the vulnerability analysis. We found that wildfires and smoke create the most vulnerabilities across sectors countywide. The most vulnerable populations are people of color and immigrant communities, financially constrained households, those with chronic illnesses and disabilities, older adults, people with high outdoor exposure such as unhoused persons or outdoor workers, and persons in tribal communities. The most vulnerable community assets were found to be energy and communication infrastructure and services, homes, especially older and manufactured homes, transportation infrastructure, including both state highways and local roads, agriculture as an economic driver, and then outdoor recreation and tourism as economic drivers. So city and county staff contributed to and reviewed the climate vulnerability analysis at each step in the process, and the report of the analysis is now posted on the Lake County 2050 website. We have received some feedback from the community related to the climate vulnerability analysis via an online survey. These are a few quotes from one of the open-ended questions asking the community members for their ideas for resilience in Lake County. We heard the importance of rehabilitating Clear Lake, undergrounding electrical lines, and regular controlled burns, and the use of cattle and livestock grazing to limit fuel for wildfires. For populations, we heard making local homeownership a priority, and ensuring all voices are heard and considered in this process. For specific ideas, we heard finishing the Middle Creek Floodplain and Wetland Reconnection and creating micro grids at water plants, filters, and emergency operations center. And then more recently, the project team has facilitated several stakeholders discussions, hosted a Community Risk Reduction Authority Town Hall, and held city and county staff coordination meetings to get their input on successes, gaps, and potential adaptation solutions for the adaptation plan. The project team took the results of the vulnerability analysis and integrated them with the pillars of landscape resilience, which I'll now go over. So adopted in 2023, the pillars of landscape resilience framework is based on the Tahoe-Central Sierra Initiative. With feedback from local tribes, the images for the pillars were then adapted to better reflect Lake County. This framework recognizes the interdependence of ecological and social systems, and provides metrics for measuring progress towards ecosystem and community resilience. There are 10 pillars in total representing the desired landscape outcomes. These include air quality, biodiversity conservation, carbon sequestration, economic diversity, fire-adaptive communities, fire dynamics, forest resilience, social and cultural well-being, water security, and wetland integrity. Each of these components are now being incorporated into the adaptation plan, and I'll now provide an overview of the contents of the CAP. So the plan itself covers the unincorporated areas of Lake County, along with the two cities, and will be organized by the pillars of landscape resilience, and has a long-term planning horizon similar to that of a general plan. The plan will contain background sections summarizing the climate vulnerability analysis and local knowledge and lived experiences from community engagement across the county. And the resilient strategies and actions will be based on the pillars of landscape resilience, identifying feasible solutions, and providing multiple benefits where possible. And the project team does recognize the great work that is already happening across the county, and therefore, the plan will highlight existing partnerships and programs wherever The resilient strategies are organized by goal, strategy, and action. The goals are broad outcomes or end states describing desired future conditions. The strategies are policies, programs, and approaches to achieving the goal. And the actions are the implementation steps for each strategy. And each action contains a bit more detailed information for implementation, including responsible and supporting agencies, implementation timeframe, general cost estimates, and potential funding sources. The adaptation plan will contain one goal per pillar, including the following. For air quality, advancing community resilience to smoke and poor air quality events. Biodiversity conservation, the county's network of native species and ecological communities is healthy, abundant, and distributed across the landscape. Carbon sequestration, enhance carbon sequestration capacity across forests, ag and working lands, and wetlands. Economic diversity, sustainable and resilient nature, natural resource-based economy. For fire-adaptive communities, fire-prepared and resilient communities with the capacity to manage desired fire and suppress unwanted fire. For fire dynamics, fires burn in an ecologically beneficial way and socially acceptable way. Forest resilience, resilient forest ecosystems that provide essential ecosystem services, support cultural heritage, and sustain economic opportunities. Social and cultural well-being, a community connected to nature to recreate, maintain, and improve overall health. Water security, reliable, safe, and equitable access to clean potable water. And then wetland integrity, protected and restored wetland and riparian ecosystems provide essential ecosystem services. So this slide shows some of the example strategy concepts under four of the 10 pillars. For biodiversity conservation, it's strengthening habitat connectivity, invasive species management program, and protecting and restoring aquatic habitat and water quality. Under water security, water quality monitoring, water supply infrastructure and emergency coordination, and drought resilience. Under cultural, social and cultural well-being, integrating public health into emergency planning and outreach, expanding access to climate resilient resources and resilience hubs, and then strengthening tribal co-management of natural resources. Under economic diversity, the concepts include supporting climate resilience ag practices, fostering a healthy and sustainable tourism and recreational economy, and ensuring equitable hazard preparedness access for small businesses. And then as for next steps, this shows the overall adaptation plan development timeline. As mentioned previously, the project began in 2023 with outreach associated with the Lake County General Plan Update occurring from 2023 and 2024. And then the climate vulnerability analysis was completed earlier this year and is now available on the Lake County 2050 website. And we are currently in the plan development phase, conducting outreach and engagement activities, and drafting the strategies and actions for the plan. And then once adopted, the plan will be, the implementation phase will begin, which will likely be this winter and beyond. So as far as next steps, we'll also be releasing the Climate Adaptation Plan for review by local tribes before the formal public review period. We'll be holding other study sessions as well, with the Lakeport City Council this evening, Clear Lake City Council on November 6, and the Lake County 2050 General Plan Advisory Committee and Local Area Plan Advisory Committees on October 27. And then we also encourage you and community members to visit the project website at lakecounty2050.org. So we are hoping to get your input on the Climate Adaptation Plan, and therefore have one discussion question for your board to consider. And the question is, what are your biggest concerns related to implementing climate hazard mitigation, adaptation, or resilient strategies in Lake County?
All right. Yep. Supervisor Sabatia.
Thank you very much for this update. It's really hard to talk about one specific aspect, because this is basically like the big 30,000-foot level general plan, because I just don't know that we can have any conversation about what we envision on our future development and where things should go without identifying climate change in the first place. So to me, it's not a separate topic, it's an embedded topic. So my comments will be a little bit larger than just the climate action plan. Number one, if you can go back to goal number five, that one kind of bothers me a little bit, and I would like to at least have a brief discussion. And sorry, number four, a sustainable and resilient natural resource-based economy. I'm just going to be blunt, that is a life of poverty. And I want a value-added economy, because the most natural, you can pull diamonds out of the ground and be one of the poorest countries in the world, right? But you can also have the most unnatural and be the richest in the world, like Silicon Valley. Like, I want something more than just pulling natural resources from our ground and selling that at the lowest price possible and calling that an economy. And I really want to push us, as we discuss these things, to go a little further, where there's value added to things either we bring in, or maybe resources we pull from the ground. But this concept of natural resource economy just seems like a very low-level vision of where we can bring the economy, and I'd like to push us to go a little further. Value added is where it's going to be. Every level that you add something to a natural resource is going to lead to a higher level of value, which trickles down. And so I just, that to me is part of the example of why Lake County is what Lake County is. We've never really gone further than that, because we've struggled. And so I just want to kind of highlight that, that I wish it was differently phrased to really push us to the next level of what an economy could really look like, because that's economic mobility, rather than what we already have currently. But, so to me, my biggest concern overall is, what is this going to do to development? I mean, are we going to add more layers of burdens and barriers and obstacles? We want housing, we want commercial development, whether that's manufacturing, retail, whatever the future holds for us. And I get concerned about that. And so to me, I kind of really, I almost want to dwindle it down in my mind to what makes a safe environment for me to be able to develop and make sure that whatever I develop, we don't have to necessarily be so afraid about it. And it's, how do we reduce the woo-ee all around us? And we came and talked about the general plan and where we were, and I was a little frustrated that there was so many, so little amount of parcels that seemed to be looked at for changing the zoning. I think zoning is one of the most important parts of building a climate resilient area. And I just, I was a little bummed that there was only very few parcels being changed. In my mind, you have our community growth boundaries, which can have a whole bunch of different types of zones. Around there, with a nice buffer, you surround that by agriculture, and hopefully we can create incentives so that infrastructure can occur around those community growth boundaries. And then in between agriculture and the rest is the woo-ee. And agriculture can help protect from these climate change issues. Granted, it's maybe still going to be difficult for drought and other things, but we just said fire and smoke are our biggest issues. And if we don't change the zoning and don't really incentivize agriculture in a way that can protect our communities, and we're not looking for a higher level of value of economy than just natural resource economy, I guess my question is, what are we really changing? And so that is my concern for this whole project, is we can't keep doing, I'm almost certain if we look at the way, at least what I last saw in the last update of the general plan that was brought to us, I bet you I could look at 1990 or early 2000, and it's probably not all that different, except we're using new words because of how we've evolved in what we say. So I just, that's my personal opinion, I don't know if there's support for that, but I really want to push for, I don't want to ask if I develop this, is it safe? No, I want to create those safe situations so that a lot of good development can happen in the right way. And then nature is nature, and we want to keep nature, but we definitely want to contain where it is that we're planning to develop and make it as simple as possible. And I'm worried about the burden we're going to place, where we have the Hape, we have all these things, and then nothing will happen because we actually aren't changing how we're viewing our community and how we can develop. I'll stop. I'm sorry if that was very negative.
Supervisor Owen.
I don't know if anybody else had an issue with attachments and this information coming through on Greenwichus. I did not receive it.
It was just a memo, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
That's all I got to.
Because I wasn't able to read ahead on all this.
We can send.
Thank you.
We can send out the PowerPoint.
Okay, thank you.
I'm getting a message from Michael Green. This is the same comment.
Go ahead.
Well, my biggest, first of all, I think everything's pretty well-covered in here. The stuff that I would have asked about have come up in the plan or with survey comments. But I guess my biggest concern would be having the, there's a lot of climate mitigation that needs to be done. Where are we going to get the money to do it all? And where are we going to get the staffing? Because we have a massive amount of things going on right now, so that's my big concern. We can have these great plans, but if we don't have funding sources, then that's an issue. So I guess that's my biggest concern.
Yeah, I think that's the case with a lot of these plans that we're developing, including the Hape, right? We saw a lot of like, good strategies in there, but a lot of them are dependent on county staffing, county funding, and you know, this is not going to be dissimilar, but without the plans and without the data, it's very hard to procure the grant funds to move forward. So it's a little bit of a chicken and an egg, but, and also, this is a very long-range plan, like the general plan. So whereas like the multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan and some of the other plans mentioned here are more short-term, really focused on strategies, this is a little bit more of an overarching plan to look more seriously at the big picture.
Thank you. All right. So I'll go ahead and open it up to the public at this time, to see if anybody has comments about this, and come up to the mic, and there you go.
Getting dizzy looking at that.
Good afternoon, Chair Crandall, Vice Chair Rasmussen, and Board members, or Supervisors, sorry. Margot Cambara, member of the General Plan Advisory Committee, speaking for myself. So the Climate Adaptation Plan prompts proactive water security measures. South County is no stranger to wells going dry. High Valley and Spring Valley residents have water availability concerns. And Lake County's Big Valley groundwater basin is subject to state monitoring. Lake County Board of Supervisors Vice Chair Rasmussen commented at the October Big Valley Advisory Committee meeting that if the county's groundwater is not managed well, the state could step in again. It is in Lake County's best interest to manage its resources well, especially groundwater. These following suggestions may get us to groundwater security and sustainability. First, promote through revising or creating ordinances, A, for smart and sustainable use of water for ag and development, B, supporting water conservation, drought management, preparation for drought, and use of technology to conserve water, and C, review discretionary use permit applications for smart and sustainable use of water. Revise county ordinances and regulations to make permities accountable for water usage Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Any on Zoom? All right. We'll go ahead and bring it back to the Board, I think. Go ahead.
Just a question, based on some of the comments that were made, just made me think about, is there a thought of how to protect our creeks? We were just talking about earlier about the co-management of the lake. Mr. Montez brought up the creeks. I asked if that was the co-management of the lake and the creeks, because again, the source that goes into the lake is as important to manage and maintain properly, because you're never going to change the outcome in the lake, or the output coming into the lake, if you don't look at the source. Are we, out of the climate action plan, is it adaptation or adaptation?
Adaptation.
Adaptation. I was wrong. Is there any suggestions on how to handle wells? I know it is one of the most sensitive topics, but when, I know I've had conversations, I know it's not a popular thing, but Yolo County Flood Control, they're concerned that the water is not going into the lake, which is our similar concern. If the creeks don't have water, then the fish don't have water, and that's also our drinking water. It all, it's all one big ecosystem. And is there any conversation about looking at restrictions on proximity to creeks when it comes to well drilling for future wells? Would this come out of this type of conversation with the Climate Adaptation Plan, or is that a completely separate topic?
I do know that we have a creek setback ordinance that we would like to work on at some point that's separate from all of these efforts that we're mentioning. I don't know that it's specific to well drilling, that maybe, I'm not sure if that's regulated by the Water Board more, or like EH, for example. But overall, as far as development from creeks and setbacks, we are looking into that, or it's at least on our docket of things to do. And then we also do have that in our And then we also do have that in our waterway combining zoning code and the grading ordinance, there are setbacks required from creeks and waterways. Do you have anything related to the CAP?
And when you say it's on your docket, on the docket as in it will be a recommendation within the CAP or completely separate conversation?
Do you know about the CAP? I'm not sure.
Jaclyn, could you say whether or not that has come up in the CAP?
So, in the Adaptation Plan, there has been some discussion of management of creeks related to septic systems, not necessarily wells, but there are more general strategies relating to managing the creeks, recognizing they flow into the lake. So, we have a couple of actions, draft actions that are related to that. We could take a closer look at specifically groundwater and wells if the board would like.
Because I know I've had that conversation with EH, and you're correct that it would be going through EH. I'm sure the State Water Board would be involved, but it's a conversation, I think, that's really sensitive, difficult, but absolutely critical that we have that conversation at one point very soon. If not, already should have.
Thank you. We'll take that into consideration.
I think with regard to creeks and, you know, waterways that lead into the lake, whatever it may be, I don't see it necessarily as a climate issue, it's more of a man-made issue. We aren't clearing the vegetation, we aren't removing sediment, we're not, we're not, well, the state puts restrictions to our, to getting licenses for this as well. You know, there is a way to do it, but it, so I just see it as it's a man-made issue, but if there's a way we can tie it in so that if our plan's in place and we can use that to inspire the state to give us permits to do some of the work, that would be great too. So, I mean, I just bring that up because you brought up creeks.
And I appreciate that, and I think that you're not incorrect in what you've seen and what you've experienced and what we've already been presented on here as well. But I think during droughts, it exacerbates the problem and hence being a climate change issue simultaneously. So, I think that it kind of touches on both.
Right, right. So, I don't know, I just wanted to highlight that, you know.
In regards to creeks, we also, there's an aggregate resources management plan that's part of the general plan, but we held on it for this round, and it's something that we intend to address once we have completed the work that we're currently doing. So, that's another opportunity for us to look at strategies around creeks when we get to that point.
Thank you. Any other, I went from the board. If not, I think we are to approve the, wait, yeah. No, that's the wrong one, I'm sorry. I don't know why I had that.
No action.
I think it's just, yeah, I think it's no action, right? Yeah, no action.
I did just want to add that we also have been out in the, at the community, I'm sorry, the Municipal Advisory Council meetings. I think by the end of the month, we will have hit all of them, but SURF who.
They've canceled, they've had a.
Yeah, they've had some, some issues getting scheduled and all of that. So, if you are part of a community but you haven't had a chance to participate in one of those meetings and would like to make input, certainly you're always welcome to submit a comment card on lakecounty2050.org regarding any parts of the project. But if you have comments specific to the CAP that you would like to see included before we issue the public draft, then now would be a good time to watch one of these presentations and take a look at the climate vulnerability analysis, and then you could give us feedback online as well as through any of these meetings that we'll be holding over the next couple of weeks still.
It'll be available on the 10th. I don't know, we'll set that up or however, the 10th of November. Their meetings fall on the second Monday, and for the past two, like even this, luckily, the holiday falls on a Tuesday, and I guess we're celebrating it on a Tuesday rather, you know, and taking the day. So, the 10th still falls in line with the, with the every second Monday, so I don't know if we can, if I need to connect you or if you're already set to meet with somebody, we can work that out.
Okay, yeah, we'll work on that.
Yeah, just a quick question. I appreciate that the CAP is being looked at kind of more globally where different jurisdictions are involved with this. And if you don't mind just talking about the general plan, since the general plan does bump up against city jurisdictions, will there ever be a presentation to say, here's what your neighboring zoning will look like and things like that? Or is there not that conversation happening?
I haven't heard of that conversation yet, but I'll be at Lakeport City Council tonight and Clear Lake City Council in November. So, we'd be happy to have those discussions with the cities if they'd like us to make a presentation on the general plan.
Just because, you know, knowing how their zone versus your zones align, I think matters. So, that's why I bring it up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you very much.
So, we appreciate it and for all your work.